We do have flood authority, I think I have to be on that downstairs. We haven't had any floods lately, so I don't think, yeah, let's cancel the meeting, no floods have happened. Oh, that's right.
Water, no meeting.
Yeah. One thing for sure, we either have a drought or a flood. It's usually not too much in between. And what's the deal with that? Mother Nature's freaking me out.
They're saving it up so we can get more floods.
That's it. Rained for forty days and forty nights here. Let's see.
We've got high-priced accountants.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and gavel our meeting into session because um we do have our accountants here and I know that and they're just they're here just to make sure we do everything proper and so we're gonna start right at four o'clock, we do appreciate them and thank you everyone for being here as we start the Board of Commission meetings for Washington County. We'd like to start off by an invocation that'll be given by Susan Lewis, after which Dave Houston, a retired Marine Corps Colonel from our Military Officers Association of America will will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance and before he does, I just have to tell you Dave that for a Colonel in the Marine Corps, you're one of the nicest Marines I've ever oh, maybe, maybe that's it, maybe that's it, so. Yes, but thank you for your service and thank you for being here.
Our dear kind Father in heaven, we are so grateful to thee for the many blessings that thou has given us, for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country and for the opportunities that we have here in Washington County, we ask that thou would please bless our leaders with the knowledge and the inspiration that they need to make wise decisions for our good and we ask that thou would bless us this day that we will be able to enjoy this meeting, that we will be able to get the work accomplished that needs to be done and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our first item on our agenda is our consent agenda, the consent agenda is a means of expediting, the consideration of routine matters. If a commissioner requests that an item items be removed from the consent agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda is non-debatable.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion in support of today's consent agenda consisting of item A, consideration of auditor approved claims for payment for July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty through August fourth, two thousand and twenty. Item B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Item C, consideration of administrative adjustments for real property and B, consideration of administrative adjustments for personal property. Also, item E, consideration for tax, uh, consideration of application for property tax abatement, of which there are three.
Very good, thank you Commissioner.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thank you. Our first item on our regular agenda is a presentation of the two thousand and nineteen Washington County Financial Audit by Hinton Burdick, Susan Lewis.
Can I just jump up here quickly as Mike comes up, I just wanted to take a minute and express our appreciation to them, they have been a wonderful team to work with and especially with all the weirdness that's went on this year with COVID, we appreciate their team for spending the time and effort and you remember we had a meeting a couple of months ago where we discussed what would be audited and then they've done a deep dive into our books and he's here to tell us what the results are, so thank you Mike.
Thank you Susan. Honorable Commission and County Staff, pleasure to be here tonight. Again, my name's Mike Spilker, most of you know me, I wanted to introduce Steve Palmer, he's a also an audit partner on the engagement, we uh kind of due to the new governmental auditing standards, we we like to have a second look, if you will, and so Steve stepped in to fill that role for the county this year. May- maybe it was because he was thinking that I'm getting too old for this, but at any rate, like appreciate what he's done for us this year. Um, like Susan said, it's been a little bit different this year because of COVID and and some of the issues that we had to deal with and and also because of that you don't have a a bound financial statement that we're actually gonna look at or review today, that's basically all completed outside of one of the component units and our understanding that they were pushed back a little bit further than everybody else because of the issues that are that we're dealing with. So as soon as we receive that report from the other auditors, we'll we'll include that and and issue our bound financial statement for your review. But basically in a nutshell, that report that as it stands now says that that we've audited the financial statements and we found that they're fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, a clean opinion's been issued there. As part of the county audit, again, as in every year, we're required to look at federal and state compliance requirements. We've issued a report on that 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 will show a clean opinion, no findings or recommendations. And also again, this year, the county expanded over seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal revenues, so we were required to do what's called a federal single audit and there were no findings in connection with that report and that audit as well. Uh, so great job by county staff and and the commission and and all those who are involved with the finances. Based on those reports which I've just talked about and also as we'll look as we go through some of the graphs, you'll see a you know, pretty strong financial condition for the county and 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 a lot of good things to report for the two thousand and nineteen calendar year. Um, basically, as it spells out in your management discussion analysis, Washington County is one of the fastest growing counties in the state and as a result of that, you're seeing increases in your transient room tax, your restaurant taxes and and some of the other taxes as well. If we if we look at some of the graphs here, the first one reviews the general fund of the county and as you can see there, we're looking at five years, twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, and there's consistent growth in the fund balance of the general fund. Now, we're gone from seven point seven million to just over ten million. The chart there below, the revenue and expenses reflects the growth of the county, like we just talked about. Revenues are up, revenues and expenditures are up about twenty-six percent over the last five years, so you can see on that graph there, it's just a consistent trend upward with the growth in the county and and the related revenues and expenditures and you know, the costs that come with that growth. These these graphs and charts that that I've that we've decided to put together are they just reflect not all of the county's activity, but the the most significant funds. I believe we picked any fund that had a fund balance over five million to include with the charts here, so. Next one we're looking at here is assessing and collecting. We see top of that, can read that, consistent and steady growth also in assessing and collecting and we also see consistently that revenues have exceeded expenditures in the assessing and collecting fund. Normally with that special revenue fund, we would expect it to break even over time. So that's something that the the county is watching and should be watching as you go forward and and budget for that. Next one we have here is the travel board fund. Uh, again, consistent increases in the fund balance over the last five years except for twenty seventeen. This fund is has experienced fifty-two percent growth revenues over the last five years, so again, a reflection of the growth in the county and and the increasing budget the commission needs to go through each year. Finally, we come to the capital projects fund, this one we've got eighty-three percent growth in fund balance over the last five years. But when when we look at the revenues and expenses for this, it kinda jumps all around as you can see and that's that's what we would expect to see with the capital project fund normally you budget and earmark revenues to go into that fund and some years the capital projects aren't, you know, they don't come to fruition, so to speak, and so you're stockpiling revenues and and fund balance and then they're expended in future years, so that one kinda fluctuates up and down as we go go forward. That's as municipal services fund, this is a special revenue fund and again, consistent growth there from year to year, we see a little blimp in two thousand and seventeen which was a result of some uh, one-time grant revenues and related expenses that were reported in that fund that year, so. Otherwise, pretty pretty consistent as we would expect. This chart here is the recreation fund. And again here, consistent net revenues over the last five years outside of the one in twenty seventeen. In two thousand and seventeen, there was a budgeted two million dollar transfer to the capital projects fund out of that that recreation fund, so we see that that spike in twenty seventeen in the expenditures. Otherwise, pretty consistent fund balance, net revenues of about one and a half million each year. And then the last significant fund that we'll look at is the corridor preservation fund. This was a new fund in two thousand and fifteen and you can see the first year we had significant revenues over expenses as we were stockpiling those and and budgeting for future capital projects and then in twenty nineteen, this year that we're looking at, uh, we had a net expense over revenues of two and a half million to kind of to catch up for some of those as we completed those corridor projects. Uh, any questions on any of these graphs that we've hit so far? Okay, and this year I wanted to just highlight, provide this little chart for the county's long-term liabilities. Uh, you can see that as of twenty nineteen, we had about fifteen and a half million dollars in bonds outstanding and there was a decrease of of nearly two million in those bonds for the calendar year and that was a result of just regularly scheduled debt service payments and so you'll see that occur again in twenty twenty in future years. Uh, same thing with capital leases, I went down from seven point five to five point nine or one point six million. The the net pension liability is up by six point seven million. Um, but I included on this graph, if you if you take a closer look at this, there are some other balance sheet accounts that relate to this pension liability that you have to consider when you look at the full financial effect of the pensions for the county. And so your deferred outflows went up and the deferred inflows went down, so basically the the net effect of all of the pension activity for the year was a a decrease in the county's fund balance of four point five million. And again, that can fluctuate, you know, just based on the the performance of the assets that the state is managing and just FYI, the state of Utah is probably, well, it is the best managed fund of any of the states that we audit in uh, and it's it's substantially better than most of the other states that we audit. So there's there's a that's the positive side to this pension liability discussion, I guess, in the state of Utah. Last couple of graphs here are just a review of the fund balances for the county. And these these balances are reported on what we call a modified accrual basis. They're they're not actually just cash, but they're current liabilities and current assets. That doesn't include all of the county's long-term assets, infrastructure, doesn't include the long-term debt and so forth, but just a kind of a a modified accrual basis approach, so that's what we're talking about when we look at these and if you look at from twenty eighteen on the bottom, twenty nineteen on the top, and the numbers are also presented side by side. We can see that all of these fund balances for the significant funds, uh, those that are over five million. Uh, they're all up other than the Habitat Conservation Fund and the Corridor Preservation and those were down due to, you know, budgeted expenses that were planned for the year. So that was what we were expecting to find. The next one shows all of the other remaining funds of the county. Um, wrap, tax, debt service, glass B roads, flood damage, Children Justice Center, library, council on aging and grants. And again, all of these are up outside of debt service and the grants fund which were which also had planned expenditures of fund balance. So like I mentioned in the beginning, a very positive report. Always nice to do an audit presentation when when there's really only good things to talk about, so I appreciate that. We really um appreciate the opportunity to work with the county and and your staff have done a great job, they're always uh, they always do everything they can to help us get in and out and uh get things done and and provide us the information that we we might request, so. Appreciate that, any any questions?
No, thank you.
Mike and Steve, thank you both for your hard effort and the many years that you've been helping the county do its job the way it should be done financially and and any of the hints and things that you give us along the way to help us be better stewards of those public funds, we appreciate.
Thank you. Thank you. Hopefully, Kim Hayfon wasn't too hard on you and yes, please.
I just want to echo the what Susan had to say about our relationship with Hinton Burdick, we have a, I think, a great relationship with them, obviously, we 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 want to be their partner, although they're they're here checking up on us, but we're grateful for the staff that they send in here, Victoria, I'm not sure of her last name, I probably can't say it anyway. Uh, but kind of leads that group that comes in and they're in and ask the questions and find the information they need, but we have a if we do something that's new, we always want to call them and say, hey, we're thinking about this, doing this different, we'd like to you know, kind of have your blessing before we surprise them with something else, but we have a great relationship with them. Just to say, you know, it's a great report that we heard, but we take and Susan and the whole department can take pride in that, we we worry about our financial statements, we spend time on them to make them the way they're supposed to be, we think we need to be good stewards of the public's money, we try to do that. I think between their money and their votes, that's what we really are worried about over there, but anyway, we're grateful for Mike and his group and uh, I'm grateful for the team that I have there that we have a bit of, uh, we're trying to be conscientious with what we're asked to do over there, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, and Chair, you know that it's easier when somebody lays their books out and they're done properly and I'm assuming, Mike, Stephen, that you found that to be true, that Kim's books are not only easily read, but you can see everything in front of you that you need in a quicker and faster, uh, sort of activity than other experiences you've had around the country. Well, that's good because now on record, you say you just lowered your fee because they were so efficient.
So efficient, so easy to work with.
No, thank you for your hard work.
And Mister Chairman, before we go on, I would just like to comment, this clean audit is really nice. Person who's really responsible for that is our clerk auditor, Kim Hayfon and his deputy Susan Lewis and his capable staff that assist him in doing that, so Kim and Susan and the rest of you. Thank you very much for the great job that you're doing.
Thank you, both of you Commissioners, and thank you, Kim, and I'd just like to echo what you what you just said is that how much we appreciate our clerk auditor and clerk auditor's office staff and I know we like to give Kim a hard time and he's really good at at taking it, but boy, I really do appreciate you, Kim. Yep, thank you. With that, speaking of clerk auditors, let's move right along and let them jump on to item number two, which is a consideration of our purchase requests. It's good to have the auditors here, they can see that every uh, every expenditure is properly, um, has a public hearing and we talk about it, so.
I got all the good stuff. Uh, the first one we have here is for um tourism, this is subscription fees for tourism data and that's a total of twenty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the next one is for our roads department. This first one we have here is for a project on the Colob Terrace Road, it's for barriers that include stabilization pins and all the good stuff that goes along with it or the curves and such around that road, make it a little safer. And that's a total of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. The next one we have here is also for our roads department, it is for two message boards. These message boards are fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars each, which brings our total to twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the final one we have here is for the sheriff's office, this was for the COVID-nineteen testing services for the inmates and this is the initial bill of twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Very good.
Chair, is the testing, I think I should notice that Soft Cell, it's a, I think it's a local company.
It is, actually.
And that they actually conducted almost six hundred tests, but they're charging us for four hundred.
Yes, they gave us a discount on two hundred and ninety-nine tests.
So I appreciate that for one, um, and then I don't know if that's
Well, two hundred tests, let me
Yeah. And it does say, it does say CARES Act money here and I wanted to add that, but the one I want to go back to is the one for uh, the public might say, wow, two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars for barriers along a very dangerous road, actually, that has claimed some lives and that it is also dangerous for the numerous bikers of which since COVID, biking has gone through the roof as far as people wanting to recreate and get around quicker and that bikes on that road are ever increasing concern, but I want to say that even though I'm a big fan of using local contractors and the buildings that we're building, if that one item alone went out to purchase those or do some of the construction, I know there's more cost to it, it would be a lot more than that. So thanks to Dean for, uh, Wolfenstein for hunting down not only the best price, but my opinion, making it well, money well spent for the county, safety and other things. Um, with that, I move that we approve the purchase request as read into the minutes.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase request, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Item three is consideration of proclamation number two thousand and twenty dash fourteen, a proclamation declaring August sixth, two thousand and twenty, Greatest Generation Day in Washington County, and I believe Susie Laffeioli is going to uh lead out on this and then we'll, did you want to come to speak briefly to the proclamation that I'll read into the record? And Susie, um, you're on vacation this week or?
I am, I'm not doing anything at all this weekend, this week, we're two hours away.
We're two hours away from the ribbon cutting, we're excited, this is great.
Opening with our parade, um, what we wanted to do this year at the parade, or excuse me, at the county fair was really recognize our veterans here in southern Utah, um, especially our World War Two veterans that are here still living with us. We, it's the seventy-fifth anniversary of World War Two and we have nearly ninety World War Two veterans that are still living here in southern Utah, so in June, I sent out a postcard and email, or excuse me, a mail and a letter to these veterans, inviting them to a private ceremony where we can recognize their service and their efforts in World War Two. Had some, a lot of cute phone calls from a lot of veterans that are in the veterans home that are shut in and can't come, that sent their regrets. A gentleman who is ninety-nine years old, um, just really amazing and told a lot of really cool stories, I was on the phone with him for thirty minutes, but we just thought as a fair board that this was one way we could recognize our veterans in in southern Utah was by having this military celebration commemoration day for them on Thursday, August sixth, and what we did was we invited all of these veterans, I'll have about twenty of them there. This will probably be the last large gathering of World War Two veterans in this area. Um, so twenty of them about will be participating, will be attending, we did it before the fair opens Thursday um, because they are part of that vulnerable population. Um, and it's a private ceremony, so we've only invited them and their family members and some dignitaries, so no more than sixty or seventy people. But we really just thought it would be neat to just, again, show our appreciation for these veterans and the service they've provided us.
Thank you so much, Susie, and I think what's interesting is all of our parents served in, all of our fathers served in World War Two, I'm the youngest in my in my family and so my dad was a World War Two veteran and and that's something we kind of have as as Commissioners that, you know, I I knew that as I was reading through this proclamation, I was I was surprised and startled by how it touched me and and I think what I'm really surprised by is that my father's generation is almost gone now, I mean, to only have um, a hundred, uh, less than a hundred veterans here in Washington County is is, um, boy, they're passing quickly.
They are, and and what a great legacy they have left for their families and for the southern Utah community.
It's just amazing, well, with that, I'll I'll go ahead and read the proclamation Commissioners. A proclamation declaring August sixth, two thousand and twenty, Greatest Generation Day in Washington County. Whereas why, whereas during World War Two, over sixteen million Americans served in the United States Armed Forces with nearly four hundred thousand, six, four hundred and six thousand dead and six hundred and seventy thousand wounded. A hundred and thirty thousand and two hundred and one American prisoners of war, of whom one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine returned home after the war and whereas Americans who fought during World War Two are known as the Greatest Generation because they served their country with incredible courage and bravery. The cost of freedom was very high and was paid for by their sacrifice and whereas these veterans left the comforts of their home and risked their lives to rid the world of tyranny, whereas today, World War Two veterans represent a mere fraction of the American population with three hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand veterans still living in the United States. About three thousand in Utah and just under one hundred in Washington County. Whereas these men and women served with distinction during the world's deadliest conflict which ended seventy-five years ago in nineteen Whereas these men and women served with distinction during the world's deadliest conflict, which ended 75 years ago in 1945. And now, wherefore, be it resolved that we, Gil Omquist, Dean Cox, and Victor Iverson, county commissioners in Washington County, Utah, do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 6, 2020, as the Greatest Generation Day in Washington County in tribute to World War II veterans, the living, the disabled, and the dead, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring you and remembering your service.
Susie, that was an awesome idea of the Fair Board to honor this group of the Greatest Generation. I just my feelings inside is, as we discuss and ponder what that generation did for us and the world that it made possible, not just for the United States, literally the entire world was in the grips of tyranny then, and so this is, this is well deserved.
Thank you. You'll, you'll have to also see, we've created a wall of honor.
Nice.
At the fairgrounds in the Harmony, in our newly air-conditioned Harmony Building. And we asked people in the community to submit photos of their veteran. And we, we did that campaign for a good two months, and the banners are up with these pictures, and you just walk in there. We're also going to have the bison that Washington City has made of the veteran bison that will be there on display as well at the Harmony Building with our wall of honor and these veterans, and I hope every year it just continues to grow.
Well, I think it's notable that, having conducted all my personal research on this, but I think it's an accurate statement. In 1776, the military was formed to not only create a new nation, but also to protect upcoming freedoms that even they didn't dream about, but that they wanted and couldn't predict the future. But I would say in my opinion, but I think it's fairly factual as well, that it's the largest organized military in the world since 1776. That is a free citizens' military that did not have the citizens turn on them. When you look through world history, so many militaries formed that were oppressive, that didn't respect the citizenry, or that had only political or militaristic gains, eventually had even their own citizens, through bloodshed or other means, not support the military. And so today, though, in our country, I don't care who's protesting where, and the very freedom that allows them to protest even against the military was fought for by that very military. And so, you know, it goes beyond just even the idea of having an army or a military to protect people around the world, but here locally as, as well. So um, I invite anyone to challenge me on the fact that it's been the largest continuous since 1776 military organized of free citizens to protect free citizens. That has never had them turn on them.
Thank you so much. I think this is a great thing to celebrate. And I, like I said, I'll take a motion on this, but I still am very sobered by the fact that we're down to 90 veterans from this generation left.
Less than 3,000 in the state of Utah.
That is incredible. That's just, that's, that's very startling to me.
Thank you. Well, Chair, I move that we accept and recognize the proclamation number 202014, as was read, titled The Greatest Generation Day in Washington County, August 6, 20.
And I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Susie.
Thank you.
And we, oh, I don't know. I just felt like I needed to gavel after that motion. Yeah, just like, a little more pomp. It just needed just a little more flair to it. We just couldn't move on. All right. Well, now we'll just really get with it, so.
We got charged up on that.
Exactly. Item four is consideration of resolution R dash 2020-2632, a resolution in support of the dedication of Legacy Park Road as a public right of way. And let's see.
Have Arthur there, too.
Arthur, did, actually, our attorney, do you want to speak to this? Or do you want me to speak to it? Let's see, who is supposed to speak to this? Ron's supposed to speak to this. Or do you want me just to introduce? Well, so basically, just for the public's interest, the road that runs basically from the DMV, uh, past the fairgrounds, has never been officially dedicated. It's always remained in the ownership of the county and a part of Legacy Park. And so as we look at the needs of the neighborhood, in consultation with our friends at Hurricane City, it was determined that it was important that that road be publicly dedicated, and we determined that the best avenue for that was to dedicate it as a county right of way, as a county public right of way. And so that would um allow utilities and other easements to, to use that, that route, which they currently do. But yet it would still allow the county, um, the, the need from time to time with, even though we've always had this tremendous relationship with Hurricane, to go ahead and authorize, you know, cones and traffic control that, that we need to put on there for events. And so that, that's the purpose of this resolution, is just to simply dedicate that portion of the road as a, as a county public right of way. Other discussion?
Yeah, I would just speak in support of that and support of the great relationship we have with the city of Hurricane. Our Legacy Park is in Hurricane City. And we just have a great relationship that I feel benefits both entities, and this will help Hurricane develop some of their industrial area. That will be good for their economy and for the economy of the county. And so if there aren't any other further questions, I would make a motion in support of resolution R dash 2020-2632 uh, to support the dedication of the Legacy Park Road as a public right of way.
Well, I'll second the motion with, it's not really part of the motion, but if we could suspend the motion for one minute and have Arthur come to the mic, I.
I will suspend my motion.
One, just for one minute. Arthur, would you come to the mic and just tell us that currently where Legacy Park Road and the other highway, that that becomes a T intersection? That's, and I know you've got to have this dedication before you can draw maps and show that. But that was our agreement, right?
Yeah, so the plan is for uh the intersection closest to the DMV to be reworked.
That may not be scientific enough, but I don't know those roads, so I can't tell you which, but their number.
Where the DMV is, though, right?
Yes. No, no. What I mean is, I don't know the name of those highways.
Well, right there at uh, at the intersection, it's called 5300 West.
Okay. Thank you.
And so the intersection of 5300 West and the Legacy Park Road will be reconfigured with the construction of Purgatory Road, which is master plan to go down past the Purgatory Correctional Facility and, and down kind of the east side of Purgatory Valley, and ultimately tie into SR7. And so that'll be reconfigured, so the, the Legacy Parkway Road will actually tee into that.
That's it.
Right now, it's the opposite.
Right. Okay. That's close.
So that's the, the goal there, and.
Perfect.
And we're, we're asking for the county's support, like we talked about in our last meeting, on a petition for funding from the Dixie MPO.
Mm-hmm.
To continue forward with Purgatory Road. And that would be one of the first things we would do, I believe.
Great. Alrighty. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Arthur.
Thank you, Arthur. Appreciate you.
And I reinstate my motion.
And I second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Item five, consideration of resolution R dash 2020-2633, a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative agreement between Hurricane Valley Fire Special Service District and Washington County. Chief Tom Coleman, are you going to speak to this, or is Commissioner Cox?
Either way. Uh, Chief, why don't you come up and talk about it? We passed it in our last meeting, but.
This agreement, if I recall correctly, began as a concept from one of the other fire districts within the county, had some fire prevention duties that they were not able to fill rapidly or thoroughly as they would like to. They don't have a fire prevention area in their department. So they approached the county as well as Hurricane Valley Fire to see if there would be an option to have a shared position that would enable those duties to be done outside the Hurricane Valley Fire District boundaries. In order to facilitate that, we would need another position within Hurricane Valley. This agreement allows us to have a shared position to do fire throughout Washington areas.
Is this part of our fuel reduction?
No, this is an idea when we have buildings and we need fire inspections.
Oh, okay, very good.
In, on the Highway 18 corridor and New Harmony and other areas, they just do not have that expertise, and it's, it's some expertise that would benefit Hurricane Valley and the rest of the unincorporated county to be able to do these inspections. So this allows us to partner with each other to create this position to meet that need throughout the entire footprint of the Hurricane Valley and the unincorporated county area.
Very good. Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much, Chief Coleman. Um, without any other discussion, or do I have a motion?
Well, I am in firm support of it, and so I would make a motion in support of resolution R 2020-2634. On the wrong number. I flipped one ahead.
33, yeah.
At 2020-2633, a resolution approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between Hurricane Valley Fire Special Service District, Washington.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
So if they do inspect a building that's not safe, then it is a fuel reduction.
Yes, it's true. Alrighty. Item six is a consideration of resolution R dash 2020-2634, a resolution approving an easement agreement between the School Institutional Trust Lands Administration, SITLA, and Washington County. Commissioner Cox, I have you down to speak into this issue.
I wished I had a map showing the property ownership we could pick up for everybody to look at. We have many SITLA parcels interspaced throughout the county. They will find them in the middle of BLM land, private land. Washington County, in fact, has more SITLA land than any other county in the state. And this agreement allows SITLA to really partner with the county to maintain rights of way over public roads that cross SITLA blocks. And this also protects SITLA as well, because SITLA received these lands at the time the state was created. Washington County has received a few more of them than other counties have because of exchanges that have taken place elsewhere in the state. And Washington County being the jewel that it is, and rapidly growing, SITLA thought that would be a good place to trade for BLM lands. So we have a lot of those lands and roads across those BLM, those SITLA properties. But this guarantees public access and continuity of those roads over those lands.
Very good. Um, is that a motion?
That is a motion in support of resolution R 2020-2634.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second with a question. On the severability clause, it does have a discussion in there about how if a roadway, for example, is disputed or in any way we don't agree with them, it does not nullify the entire agreement for other roadways. I think that section is pretty clear. I just wanted to emphasize that.
Right. And this is a, a contract SITLA uses with each county statewide.
Yeah.
Where they have SITLA lands. That is a good point.
But I did second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item seven is consideration of resolution R dash 2020-2635, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Arizona Game and Fish. Commissioner Cox?
Speak to that one as well. Uh, well, Havi County is really unique. Uh, its county seat is in Kingman, Arizona. You have to drive through Las Vegas, or I call it driving out halfway to Mars and then coming back through Flagstaff to get through there. And so they have officers that work on the Arizona Strip and in the Littlefield area that frequently have a need to communicate with our law enforcement officers and emergency responders for a variety of reasons. So this is a mutual aid agreement that allows them to use a couple of our sheriff's office repeaters and frequencies, and in turn grants our officers the rights and ability to use some of their repeaters. And this is very necessary where we live, right in this border region, and it facilitates better communications and more effective emergency response and law enforcement presence. And so I would make a motion in support of resolution 2020-2635, approving a memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Arizona Game and Fish.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And before I call for the vote, I'd just like to say, yeah, it is, you know, Arizona, one of these days, we hope they'll give us the Arizona Strip, and then we could just solve, we could solve their problems right there. So anyway. In the meantime, I do have a motion and a second on this memorandum of understanding. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you very much.
So I've wondered why we call it fishing game and they call it game and fish.
They got it backwards.
That's clear, yes. Well, we are on to item eight, which is the commissioner's report. And Susie was here earlier. We're going to kick off the parade, but prior to the parade, at 6:45, we're going to be cutting the ribbon. It's going to be kind of a downscaled ribbon cutting this year, but we're going to cut it there at the Veterans Park as we kick off this parade in Washington City, which is our, our host city and also our, the city that we're recognizing this year. And I'm kind of excited about the county fair. A lot of events have been canceled. This is a kind of a community event that is a little bit rare in the fact that so many have canceled, so.
But I'm excited about it. Our fair board, county, and our communities have worked very closely with Dr. Blodgett. They've looked very closely at the state regulations for keeping us all safe for outdoor venues, of course, which allow groups of up to 6,000 people. And so I encourage our county residents to come and participate. We'll have hand washing stations throughout it where people can keep their hands clean, and restrooms will be really sanitized on a regular basis. So come and enjoy a great week there. This is going to be a fair week, I predict.
Absolutely.
So we should mention a couple of things coming up. Chair, if you don't mind, for the public that may be tuning in or will tune in. Our school district is opening schools April, excuse me, August 13. And I hope that we all recognize that's a battle. They've made a plan to keep all the students safe, as well as the teachers, but that there are certain factions within the state that may say it's not good enough. And that our superintendent has been very active in saying, no, we'll be the first, we'll be the guinea pig in this case, but doing what they're doing to prevent any outbreaks are very important. But as citizens, we need to stand behind the school district in opening up, and as parents, to do the right thing. Send your kids with their mask, and that's a requirement. And for sure, get ahead of this, then we will stop the panicking going on. Um, the other thing is, is that this Thursday, it's, I've heard it on the radio, and I've heard it from others, that at 3:30, is it, Nicole, that Sergeant Mount is, remains, will be taking, landing at the airport. Anyway, they're asking for about, for citizens to line on Main Street, what the radio is saying, to honor the motorcade, or at least the, for honoring Sergeant Brian Cooper Mount, who passed away in Syria on one of his military missions. So only appropriate, we have a colonel here knows how hard that is, and lose one of your men or women in battle. Here specifically, we want to honor Sergeant Mount by showing a support along our, the route, but they're asking people to line up on the street. Showing support. That's this Thursday at 3:30. That's this Thursday at 3:30.
Thank you very much, commissioners, and thank you, staff and everyone. Um, with that, I am going to, oh, so, uh, the meeting is rebroadcast daily on TDS cable, channel 22 and 108 High Definition at, uh, 10 a.m., 2 p.m. and 5:30 p.m. They're also available, um, on demand at YouTube and, uh, at the community, uh, education channel. And I believe, are we Facebook live-ing? So lucky there, you can, uh, if, you don't even have to come to commission meeting, and you could just enjoy it, so, we, we do appreciate it.
Commissioner, can I just, um, I've just looked this up so that we could be more, um, definite on the time. So they're asking 3:45 to 4 p.m. from 100 South along Main Street near Town Square, see the procession, so. Anybody that would join, I think, um, the family would be greatly, um, blessed and, and they'd be very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
Well, with that, um, we will stand adjourned.